But the agenda. Will I pull up the agenda on my phone? Okay. Randy, do you want to start with the minutes? You don't have it here at the top of the agenda. Let me turn my camera on, sorry.
Um, yeah, so just a few edits were made to the minutes and mostly had to do with rearranging stuff. The content wasn't really changed. So. I don't know. I know it came to you late. But if people have had a chance to read it, if they think it's okay, we should take a vote.
Okay, so the minutes are up for our consideration. Is there any discussion, any corrections, any other input? No. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the minutes as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed and abstentions and hearing none, we have approved the minutes.
Can I ask one question? It's not a contest on the minutes. It said that New York Energy was going to do a study on November 9th. Has that been done and when do we expect a report from them on the energy efficiency of the building?
That'll be in the report that I give of Mark's.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Okay, so Vicky, do you want to give us your director's report?
Sure. Thank you. Diana Rupp is just really wonderful. She is working out really, really well. She's intelligent, she's creative, she's high energy and, you know, she likes learning new things. So she's picking up things around here really fast and I'm able to push off onto her already all the registration. And that is working out really, really well. So, and I love the way the MailChimp looks. I mean, you know, she takes the time to make it more interesting, which is just, you know, what we need. It's just really nice. Friday, we're on the kids level, we're doing Friday for Kids. We've started up with that. I'm going into the schools and reading on Tuesdays. And. Let me see, winter programming. You saw the list of historical programs. We're doing this, this month is the president's. And that's working out pretty well. So, so far we're getting people that want to do that. And it'll go through the Columbia County Library Association with one Zoom link to theirs. Can we? Work from there. Um, we also got through the Columbia County Libraries Association. They purchased a program called Recite Me. And that has to do with accessibility, increased accessibility onto the webpage. So it's not only font, but we'll read certain parts. So it's a. It's just another way of us being able to reach all of our constituents, not just, you know, the ones that, the high level ones. It, it isn't working really well right now on the trial website. So when you look at that, it may not work really well on that until we actually have the, the website approved and it's not the staging. And just continue to work on the website development with Dottie. Thanks. That's it.
Um, Vicky, do you want to tell people about the sexual harassment training?
Oh, and I do want to tell people, thank you, Randy.
No problem.
So. October has been the month that we started doing that sexual harassment prevention training. And it's time again to do that. It is, you know, I, I didn't change anything my major this year. So you'll have the same form and I think when Randy sends out the, the minutes, it'll be as a link in there in my report and you can just click on that form. And the videos are linked to it and there's just a few questions. And if you want to know anything else and holler back to me and I'll provide, you know, provide you with any of those things. It is, it is a state law that we do this once a year. Not only to the trustees, but I'll also get all of the people that work here, all the staff. And volunteers. That's it. Thanks, Randy.
All right. Thank you, Vicky. Any questions or comments for Vicky? Nope.
Is it, is it common knowledge that that's? I think, Vicky, is that your first report made as full-blown library director?
It may be.
So you preempted me, Kim. Thank you.
Oh, sorry!
Thank you for doing that. I should have moved, I should have moved the executive committee up to the top of the agenda when we started. Sorry about that. So two things. Let's, let's just do the executive committee now. So two things going on. One is the executive committee did a review with Vicky of her goals and objectives for the year. We'll be setting new goals and objectives for 2022. But the committee voted unanimously to remove the interim title from Vicky's title here, the interim part of the title.
Thank you, thank you. And, and thank you for the lovely flowers. They were very much appreciated and I enjoyed them very much.
Good. Glad to hear that. And then the second bit of news is that Christie is going to be leaving the board at the end of December. So we are in treasurer's search mode. And I've had a couple of conversations with some folks. They're still preliminary, but you know, there's some interest. So that's all to be figured out. T B F O. But we'll keep you abreast of that as we go forward. Okay. Speaking of which, Christie, the finance committee is next on our agenda.
Yep. So we, the finance committee did meet last week, week before last, completely lost track of time sometime recently in the last couple of weeks. Don't put that in the minutes. I will send you the actual date, Randy. We did walk through sort of a laundry list of, of stuff that's currently on my plate. Just to get a, give the finance committee a feel for what's out there from a transition perspective. It's a mixed bag of stuff. So there, there's a lot of stuff out there. Some of it's easy, some of it's a total pain in the rear end, but still has to get done regardless. So we did work through trying to brainstorm some of that and did have some conversations about transitioning somebody else in at some point. So a lot still to be done there. I am not gonna cut and run on December 31st. So I will stick around as long as is, is needed. I just am so far underwater right now. I'm barely, barely breathing. So I just don't think that I'm doing the library the best service in, in my current role. And I would hate to continue another three years and not really be able to give a full focus, which I think the library deserves. So. But I'm not going anywhere if we can't find anybody by December 31st. So you're gonna have to just put up with me for a little bit longer. Outside of that, 2022 budget is, I would say about 95% of the way done. I do have to reach out to a couple people to get some clarifications on some emails that went back and forth and some data that came in. But pretty, pretty close to there. I should have it out to the finance committee by the end of this week. And then we'll go through any questions or, or anything that comes out of that. So that we can bring, I can bring it to the full board for our December meeting. So we're in a good spot for next year. I think that's it.
Okay. Any questions for Christie? And yes, Christie, thank you for not only the three years of tremendous service you've given us, but for your offer to stay on if necessary. We're gonna try, we're gonna try not to make that necessary and honor your term, but that is reassuring. And I feel better for it. So thank you.
I was just gonna mention that Sue Tanner, Dottie and I are gonna meet a week from Friday to go over the finances. You know, just till we understand the budget, what's in it right now. And then if you've got the first draft of next year's budget, we'll work with that. So there'll be some feedback from board members before it comes to the full board.
Cool. Thanks, Julie. Dale. Fundraising committee.
Not a ton to report on fundraising, a couple of quick updates. We did not sell the quilt at the quilt auction on eBay. It didn't quite get to the reserve number we wanted. So we decided to pull it off there and Dottie and I are working towards a traditional raffle after the first of the year. So we'll probably run something at the library where people can buy tickets like typically. And we'll go back that way because it always had earned more money that way. So we're gonna hold it and after the first of the year, we'll revisit that and try to make a bit more off of it. And then the other thing is the resale. We hit our target on the nose. Exactly. So we're aiming for $2,500 and we hit exactly $2,500. So that's up from 1,800 last year. So.
Nice.
Thank you. We have a few unsold. If there are any stragglers that still want to read, or if you know anybody that does, just let me know. I think we have seven that are unclaimed. So we sold every last one last year. So I'm not concerned about that. The pickup is on the 19th and the 20th of this month. So it's the week right before Thanksgiving. Rick, do you want to talk about the appeal letter for a sec?
Sure. Dale and Kim drafted a very nice letter to go out as part of the appeal letter. I've taken that to Curtis Printing and we're gonna have them produce it, stuff it and mail it. So, and it will be out before Thanksgiving.
Yay!
Well, it seemed good to sort of capture both the Thanksgiving, the kind of holiday and the giving as much as we can kind of up to the end of the year. So I think we're on a good track to get that out. That'll be great.
Thank you for, for writing it.
Yeah.
Did you guys see my email earlier today? Okay.
You're too late.
Randy, I added, I added the date and the dear neighbor part. I signed it as president, but to create a letterhead with the board of directors on it. I was worried about the timing. So.
That was minor.
I think that's all great for next year, though. I loved all those suggestions and I love the little tagline at the bottom. So I think for next year, this will just get better hopefully every year. So I want to hold on to that and think about that for a 2022 letter. Thank you for sending. That's it for me.
All right. Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything for Dale? No. Our reports are so wonderful that they never get comments or questions. All right. Dottie, anything from the marketing committee tonight?
Yes, we are really getting down to the wire on the new website. Hopefully I'll be sending the link to a few of you for your feedback. Maybe by the end of this week, early next week. Then we'll take that, that feedback and then the final tweaking will happen. And hopefully there's a possibility we could go live during December sometime. So it's really trucking along. Linda and Vicky have been stalwart committee members and have met every time we needed to meet and reviewed things I've written. And Susan Trevallion has been fantastic as well as Robert to work with. They're very responsive. You send them something and the next day you get something back. It's very nice. Other than that, I think we have a more of a presence on Instagram. I'm assuming, Vicky, you're taking care of that. And that's been nice because for a long time we haven't had anything. So that's, that piece is happening. That's it.
May I comment on the Instagram?
Pardon?
May I comment on the Instagram?
Sure.
Um, I, I think it's wonderful because I've been seeing it regularly in my feed, but it is the same picture every time of a garden. So every time I see it, I keep thinking it's a Karen Halverson picture for you. Looks a lot like those. So if we could switch it, if it's gonna be the same picture, if we could switch it like to a picture of the library or something.
It has changed. The one today was a different picture and the one before that was a different picture. Someone had commented on Instagram about that. And I assume, Vicky, then you changed it after that.
No, it was a matter of Diane and not understanding it. That part needed, that was waved down on the page that it needed to be done. I thought what was funny was we kept getting likes for the same picture. Fourth time, we're still getting likes.
Well, I like it every time I see it, but I, and I haven't been there in a while. So I don't go every day.
I think we've got it.
So, I mean, I'll keep liking it even if it's new. Because I like the library. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Dottie and the marketing committee? No?
I just have to say, I think you all are gonna be thrilled with what we got.
I'm really looking forward to seeing it.
Yeah.
All right. Vicky, you have some sort of report from Mark or?
Yes, he apologizes very much for not being here today. He was still thinking of Thursdays and they had, you know, plans that they just couldn't get out of. And so let me see, he had three points that he, after that, that he wanted me to make. The new furnace, we have a new furnace. The other one did stop completely. And the new furnace is now installed and working well. And we have a new programmable thermostat that we put in at the same time, or he had put in at the same time. And I think that that's, it actually is working. So we're going to be doing, you know, setbacks further and that's nice too. He wanted to talk about the plantings for De Angelis over here. The middle plantings got done. And they're still looking at spring to get the rest of them in. They, it's still a matter of not being able to get the bushes that they want.
Where is this, Vicky? When you say, where is it? The Eisenhower Garden or is it somewhere else on the property?
Between here, between the library and De Angelis as part of us getting that.
Okay.
Extension, yeah. It was a deal to do those things.
The rest of the plantings will be on their side of the fence. And I've given the. We had a problem with the filing for the De Angelis lot line transfer. And it didn't go through and the De Angelis's were unhappy to be taxed on the land that they donated to us. So I have a lawyer, Mitch Kosarova, and a surveyor, Pete Van Alstine, working together to get the proper filings in place.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. All right.
Oh, one more, just lastly, on the energy assessment that did happen yesterday. And we will get a written report as well as the verbal report and we'll look at the, Mark, we'll look at the recommendations and see which ones make sense to go forward with and keep you abreast.
All right. Okay. Did they say when that report would come back, Vicky?
I think he said about a week and a half.
Okay, cool. Great. There's nothing else. We'll move on to Julie and Arts and Culture. And you, you've given us quite a bit to read here.
Yeah, I figure I'll just summarize if I can here. First, I want to say, my committee has been thinking a lot about the publicity end of things. And I'm very excited that we're going to have a new website. And I want to say that if, if it's Diana working on the MailChimp, she's doing a great job. And so we've done some programs. And Dottie has found a way to publicize our YouTube program recordings on the new website, which is going to be just great. So Liz Zunon gave her program in October. It was a wonderful program and luckily it was recorded. The good news is that Bonnie Rothenberg had reached out to the teachers. And the librarian at the school had read the book to all the first, second and third graders. The disappointing thing was that the, there was hardly anybody on the, on the Zoom call, you know, for the program itself. Thank goodness that we were able to record it. And so, you know, I'm hoping that that doesn't happen again, but we might have a follow-up with the school. And I think in terms of reporting it to a grant agency, we're in fine shape because of the relationship with the school. And it would be great to do more with the school. I want to remind everybody that Alex Mar, our neighbor, is doing a program on Sunday. I hope that you will sign up. And then we're gonna have a holiday program. And I'm working on the grant proposals for funding for next year. And in terms of publicity, our neighbor Wendy Gash has decided to, has agreed to join the committee just for the purpose of writing press releases. It's a special kind of writing that has to happen, that grabs people's attention quickly and yet really reports, you know, the facts. So anyway, we're excited about that and we're looking for a new member. Maybe of a younger variety, but not necessarily. So if you know anyone who loves the arts and would like to be involved, please send me, send me information. And for now, that's it.
Okay, so just, just a quick question, Julie. Matt Crane is not coming to meetings or hasn't been?
Oh, he, he dropped off the committee once he was hired at SUNY Albany. So he hasn't been part of it for years.
Okay.
He got to be too busy.
Got you. Understood.
But he still might be interested in loaning us a sculpture at some point if we ever want to pursue that.
Yeah, I would, I would love to have a sculpture garden in the back.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Vicky, could you send the board the Zoom link for Alex's presentation like you did for Liz Zunon's? I think that was a great idea. That got, I think, some board members maybe to participate. That would be nice. Thanks.
Julie, I just have to say you gave me more credit than I deserve saying, I found a way to publicize the programs on YouTube. Basically, all we did was to ask Suzanne Trevallion to put a YouTube source next to the Arts and Culture. And that's how that happened. So we were just the idea people. She was the real action lady. Well, you need both. So thank you to all of you.
All right. Any questions for Julie? All right. Terry. We're on to ELEC. Terry still with us? Here's my.
Terry, you're on mute.
Yeah, I know. I had to get my cursor over there. Um, so thank you. I submitted my report in advance to Randy and hopefully you've had a chance to look at that. Basically, it's just going forward with the programs that are left for the remainder of this year and into early January. We had a very good presentation by the Master Gardeners from Cooperative Extension earlier, the end of, end of October. And that was our first experience with Diana. She did a great job facilitating the Zoom underthings for the library. So we were just really, really happy with that. And you know, Julie, I think it's a great idea, or was it just Randy that asked that board members receive links to the programs? Because, you know, it, it just, it's another great opportunity to just have that at your fingertips then. So that if you're able to, to sit in on that program, you can do that. So I would like to ask Vicky if that could be possible, if Diana could send everybody the links for the Balance and Strength Training Program that's coming up the next two Mondays. And also after Leona was, she had, she had already procured a speaker for getting a good night's sleep in December. And that individual backed out then unexpectedly in sometime in early October. So I'm not sure exactly how it happened, but I, I sent out some inquiries from some of the connections I had in the county. And I got a lead on a speaker who's based in Denver, Colorado. And I've had several discussions with him. He's doing a similar program for the Independent Living Center of the Hudson Valley. So I felt pretty comfortable going with him. I've also signed up for his program, which he's offering through them on November 30th. So I can actually kind of do an assessment of him in advance of our program on December 6th. But I really, Leona had worked so hard on trying to procure a speaker now for the two years on that topic, if you can believe that. And, you know, COVID pretty much dashed everything the first time through. So I really wanted to kind of honor all of her efforts by finding a speaker. So I'm really, I'm hopeful that that program will be well received. And then we're, just wanted to mention that we did take out some display ads to promote our programs for October. We've done so for November and we'll do again for our December 6th program. And that, I want to thank Vicky and Diana for their help with that, getting that into the papers. We are going to be meeting as the ELEC Planning Committee on November 19th, 1 o'clock in the afternoon in the library. And we're going to be looking ahead, fleshing out more of our programming for how to be more eco-friendly, which starts up in February of next year. My committee, my program chairs for the three events we have going in February, March and April are hard at work. Final like the details. And I did indicate we'll probably have another program in May or June next year. And then at the committee meeting on the 19th, we are going to also be talking about a a really neat program we learned about with the Kinderhook, that the Kinderhook Library has undertaken with their Climate Smart Committee. One of my friends that's on the Zero Waste Columbia Group notified me of this opportunity. So I'm going to present it to our group and see if we can incorporate part of our grant. It could be a great intergenerational thing and a community outreach effort at the same time. And it's all about recycling batteries, small batteries, not car batteries. So hopefully the big green box won't take up that much space and I'll get all the dimension information and all that information in advance. So, and the other big thing we're going to be doing, and Julie, it's interesting how you're talking about, you know, trying to recruit new, new blood for your committee. Of course, we need to do that for ELEC, not only as chair, the chairperson, but also other, other members. Because even though we have 10 or 12 people on our committee, we only really have about six to seven that are very active. So we are hoping to launch some kind of recruitment campaign. And we, we might want to talk because it might be something that we could do together. And maybe get more bang for the buck in, in the process. So that's going to be one of the things we're really gonna spend some time on. And also the transition as I, I move out of my position the end of this year. And the, I guess the big thing that the board will need to make sure is that all of the deadlines are met for the grants that need to be applied for to continue programming into 2023 for the ELEC outreach. So I think unless anyone has any questions, that's my report.
Thank you, Terry. And just about everything, and no, everything she did say is included in the report in the agenda. So you can follow, you can pick it up there as well. All right. Thank you, Terry. Dottie.
For sending the links.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Dottie, I know you've been doing some work on the long-range plan too.
Yes, it's been one meeting with Julie and Judy and Kathleen and myself, looking over the.
looking over the strategic plan and all of the goals and making some suggestions. I'm writing all of those up, sharing them with Julie, who will uh, put them into, put them into form. And then we'll probably meet again before. I would not say it's going to be a finished project right, you know, right by the end of this month at all. The other thing is while we were talking, we were looking at the 414. And I've been putting some energy and Judy into kind of reviving that idea. Today I had a phone contact with Diane Tucker to get that, get the energy and the idea of that going so that by the next election, we'll have a ballot, we'll be on the ballot. That's it.
So that'll be November 2022, exactly almost a year from now.
Yeah, that's the idea. Yep.
Great. I think that I think the timing works out well.
Can I ask, um, in the last election, which was last week, there were at least Kinderhook Library had a 414. I felt like I saw another library, I don't know if it was Malaysia, but also did those both pass?
All the library initiatives in Columbia County passed. And New Lebanon passed overwhelmingly while asking, doing exactly what we're gonna do. Asking for a huge bump because they didn't do a 414 for like 10 years. And we're even longer than that. So and they and they were very successful with their campaign, so.
Rick, can we get hold of the materials they used when they went out to publicize it to their community?
Yeah, absolutely. I've already, I've already gotten copies of, or I gave Dottie a copy of the article they got published in the Columbia paper, for example. But yeah. I'm happy to reach out to um, the board chair up there and and get that information.
That'd be great.
All right. Under nominating and governance. I've had two discussions with somebody about Christie's role as treasurer. And I've asked this person to consider it, and she is. And I'm hoping I can get back to you with um, the good news that she'll take the position on here in the next month or so. But we'll see, we'll see. Some, there's definitely some hesitancy. It's not a small role that Christie's been playing for us. It's it's, um, you know, it's a major commitment without doubt. So, uh, and we appreciate that from Christie and, you know, we've got to appreciate that it might look daunting to some other folks. So, um, I don't know, I'm I'm even willing to entertain the idea of co-treasurers. I don't know if that's really feasible, possible, how it could work out, but it probably could. And maybe that'll work. We'll have to figure this out hopefully in the next month, month and a half. So, and if you have, if any of you have any thoughts on somebody who could be the treasurer or even join the finance committee, uh, I would love to know about it and to try and recruit that person. Okay? The executive committee news I gave you earlier. The executive committee will be meeting after the board meeting tonight again. And that's pretty much everything. I don't, is there any new business that somebody wants to bring up? Randy?
Yeah, um, we should talk about the next meeting is our annual board meeting.
Right.
Coming to the end of of this meeting.
Yeah, we are. We are at the end of this meeting. I'm gonna be away until December 20th, so I, you know. I, I think it's just going to be a meeting and not a party following it, especially given the COVID situation, you know, it'll be just another Zoom meeting. But we should publicize it as much as we possibly can. And yeah, and maybe even taking that out in the local paper just to start being really, um, you know, better governed about this sort of stuff. So, um, I'll bring that up with the executive committee later tonight and we'll get back to you on what we're gonna, on which direction we're gonna go. The puppy has decided this is a good time to get hyperactive. Sorry. So, um.
Puppy is training you well, Rick.
I thought it was your stomach I was hearing growling.
So, Rick, in terms of advertising, I think I've, um, I I failed at this in our last year annual meeting. We're actually supposed to notice it in the newspaper. Is that something that Vicky does? Or however, press releases are done through the how are our press releases done for our programs to begin with?
You know, I don't remember it actually being public, you know, sending a press release out on it. Maybe Vicky does, but I I do remember that we would print up notices and we'd hang them up at the post offices. Uh, and you know, at the front desk of the library that and called that publicizing it.
Okay.
But I, but I do think in a Zoom world, the Zoom age, probably dealing with is a press release that goes into the Columbia paper or yeah, um, would be the way to do it. And I think we do it that way. We don't even have to pay for it, do we? I mean, it's just another event.
Yeah, you do it as, yeah, as a notice.
It's just a notice. Yeah.
The notice.
Yep.
Okay, Vicky, can you do that? I don't know how the publicizing happens for our programs.
I I um, have never done it. It's never been part of what the library did. The board always took care of their own. We did put it on to MailChimp. So if you want me to do it, I think somebody needs to send me what you want, you know, out there and I can send it to the paper.
A simple sentence, yeah. And a library, you know, North Adam Free Library Annual Board Meeting, December 8th. Contact the library for information on how to participate. How do we publicize our programs now? Who does that?
Diane.
We do, we do that through the library, the programs. We get the information from the committee, so usually we would expect you to send us something as a reminder, something that you want put out, and then we'll take care of sending it.
I will send you the two sentences then.
Okay.
You, you.
Say a public meeting, you know, include that.
And 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 what's going to be covered? So people have an idea of what's involved, what's at stake, why it's important to participate. You know, so I think that would be helpful as well.
I mean, the big, the big thing is to pass it to the budget and and maybe even a maybe even a resolution to do the 414 next year would be the two items that would be of interest to the public, I believe.
So we have a budget ready to be passed. What's the date on the meeting?
Well, it's currently December 8th.
Which is the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Which means the board will not have seen the budget prior to that meeting.
Can we postpone this meeting until I get back? I'll be back on December 20th. I realize I'm pushing up right against the holiday and asking that, but.
Terry, what was that? I said, I don't think that would be good for public participation, something, you know, the week before Christmas.
And Judy, I typically send out the budget to the board prior to the meeting, so it's not. Okay, I'm just, yeah. It won't be a blind copy on the day of the meeting for for the board leader, for the for the board to see it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone had seen it. There was some opportunity for feedback before we put it out for the whole world.
Um, so far, public participation has been, what do we get? We have like one high school student once, like six years ago.
I I don't anticipate a lot of people. I just figure we ought to have our ducks in a row.
I don't disagree. Just managing expectations. There's not usually a crowd at the gate.
For years and years, it was Vicky's mother was the only attendee. But we, um, we did have, but we, she was, she was there year in and year out. Uh, and we, and we did have, um, is it Darlene Gagné? Darian's mother.
Lorraine.
Lorraine, yeah, that's it. Thank you. And Lorraine has shown up at a couple as well.
Um, the more, yeah, the more interesting meeting is, of course, the one where Vicky gives her report on the year, which I assume will happen maybe in February or whatever. So I would move, would suggest that we put a notice in the paper now because we are legally responsible for doing that. But maybe also put a notice before the other one, because I think that would be of more interest to people just to see it's it's always very impressive to see what the library has done over the course of the past year.
Yeah. Well, and next year, that annual report is going to be really important for the 414 effort, so we should think strategically about that as well.
Right. Yeah, and I was thinking, you know, that we'll do it in the meeting, but then we should use it for the 414. Now, we need to have a brochure, I think, right, for the 414 that explains our library.
That's already being worked on. Vicky has a copy that Linda Morowski developed originally, and Vicky has, um, you know, worked more on it and is making copies. Great.
The unfortunate part about it is that all of our community events that were always on there are just not happening. So I'm open to ideas of what to put in there instead. You know, I mean, Bloom's was a big deal. People loved coming, you know, it's a, so it's a loss as far as getting together and uh, taste the chill. Traveling dinner, all those things were in there, ways people get together.
Well, we can talk, we can talk about that, Vicky, because, you know, we haven't gone out to the community in so many years. We have done a lot of those activities and we can acknowledge, you know, we haven't been able during the COVID period to do what we always do, but we're looking forward to bringing them all back, which is a true statement. Exactly. We could have pictures from the past. I think, you know, we could pick and choose just to show what we have done in the past because for the 414, certainly it's been just one year that we're talking about. And I think it's the track record of the library, really.
I just looked through our bylaws to see what we stated about the annual meeting, because I think I heard you talking about possibly changing the date, and that's fine. There's nothing in the bylaws that says we can't. The only thing that they, that we have in our bylaws is that the annual meeting shall be posted on the library and the post office and the library's website and any library social media sites. Not less than 15 days before the meeting.
Oh, it doesn't have to happen in December?
I thought we had changed the date precisely because we could coordinate with a holiday party.
I thought so too, but I am not seeing that.
Yeah, and that COVID has changed everything still.
So we changed it so that we could set the date whenever we wanted. So the by, so the bylaws didn't call for a specific date in the year anymore, rather than the board would set it. And that gives, gives us flexibility. And, you know, and ideally, we would do it around a holiday party, and that would be part of attracting the public to come to it. But um, in the age of COVID, that's just not happening.
So you don't technically have to have it in December then?
No.
So delaying it till next January or February, when Vicky could give a report, might be an option, a real viable option.
We knew when we moved the annual board meeting to to December that we were never going to have Vicky's report at the same time. So.
I think it was about the budget, wasn't it, that we wanted to be able to approve the budget, not in February, but in December.
Right.
Looking forward to the next year so that we weren't missing a month and a half.
Correct. I think that was the real reason. Yeah.
So that's, that's the purpose of the annual meeting then, is to approve the budget, basically.
So I don't think it's the only purpose, but I thought we decided that it was important for the annual meeting, at the annual meeting, that there was a presentation of the budget and and approval uh, for transparency purposes with whoever chooses to come.
Especially with the tax dollars.
Right.
So, um, with you being away, Rick, will we have a board meeting anyway now on December 8th?
Yes, we should. I mean, there's no reason, I'm not, we have two vice presidents. We can flip a coin to see which one can run the meeting. Or who ran the last one when I was absent?
I think I did.
All right, it's Dale's turn. This will be a good compare and contrast.
All right, when are we gonna have the annual meeting then?
Vicky, when in, when in February do you think you'll have it done typically?
No, no.
The, stick, stick on.
Separate question, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a separate question.
Annual meeting is about the budget.
That's December 8th.
All right.
It's the fun meeting.
Right, that stays the same. And then we'll have another meet, notice meeting in February when Vicky's report is done.
Okay, great. So we're staying with the annual meeting on February 8th.
December.
Vicky, I'll send you a few sentences if you could place a notice on the library and our social media sites, whoever does that. Um, if you could get something, if somebody, I don't know if you have a light, a post office box, if you could put a notice up also at the post office, that would be great. It only has to be up 15 days before the annual meeting. So, and that's great. We do actually have to, um, we have a number of board people whose terms are up, um, would have to be approved anyway at the annual board meeting, so it's important for us to actually stay with that date.
Can I get that list from you, Randy? Because some people are gonna have to be you know, met with regarding their tenure. I don't want to just assume rollovers. I want to have a conversation with everybody, in other words. All right. Is there anything else for the board under new business or any other business at this point? I will not see you on December 8th, but I will see you in January, everybody. Be well. Take care.
Bye.
Night, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
The XCon stays on.
Happy Thanksgiving. Bye.
Same to you.
Okay, bye bye.
In touch.
Executive Committee is staying on, uh, and Vicky, can you turn the recording off?